It is Tuesday, July 23rd. We'll call the Wright County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, starting off here, we have a variety of minutes from the June 26th, July 2nd, July 8th, July 9th, and July 10th meetings. We can approve them collectively or individually. I'll stand for any modifications. And the one that does say 7/26, but it is 6/26.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes collectively.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Catchmark.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe, same sign. All right. Minutes are approved unanimously. Moving on to today's agenda. Would anyone like to modify today's agenda?
Yes. I'd like to remove two items from the agenda. Items for consideration, A4 and A5. Is it? Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to remove two items from the agenda, item A4 and A5, as they have not been properly processed through the, vetted through the same processes. And I'd like those to go back to Personnel Committee or, as we've discussed earlier today, through the proper processes.
So, what I would suggest is we will remove both A4 and A5, and we will schedule a committee of the whole as a board later on in the meeting to determine. So, we replace A4 and A5 with a new A6 to schedule a committee of the whole to discuss said positions and processes for said positions.
I'll second that, if that's okay with Commissioner Dietrich. I'll second that.
All right. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Dietrich, second by Commissioner Catchmark to remove items A4 and A5, as well as adding A6 to schedule a committee of the whole to discuss said positions.
Correct.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe, same sign. All right. Motion passes. Next, any other consent agenda? Anything else we'd like to be removed from today's consent agenda for further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to remove E as in Edward 1 and C as in Charles 3 for discussion.
C. Oh, sorry, I'm going backwards. You're doing that just to make it, see how well I'm paying attention?
Oh, yeah, I guess. Sorry about that.
C3 and?
E1.
All right. And anyone else like to remove anything from today's consent agenda? Or is there a motion to remove the, or approve today's consent agenda with the removal of C3 and E1?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Holland.
Further discussion? Further discussion?
Any further discussion?
Yes. I just want to say, under C6, I just, the budget to actual report that got done, I just want to say, a great job to finance. Thank you. It's just good information to have as we review and stay on top of our budget. So, a huge thank you to everyone. Thank you.
No other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe, same sign. All right. Consent agenda is approved with the removal of C3 and E1. First would be C3. Approve attached budget amendments through June 2024. Commissioner Catchmark.
Thank you. So, we've looked at these in the past, and I thought collectively, we were, I know I pointed out, nobody disagreed, that we should have more information on these budget amendment changes. And I went through most of them with staff yesterday, but as you can see, there's just, there isn't any supporting documents or explanations to these. There was one that we didn't come up with an explanation, which is the second one to the last, where it talks about 2024 para-budget increase calculation error in the budget book for $109,842. And the outstanding question was, when and how was that error discovered?
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chair. I believe that this was discovered as we were doing budget to actual review.
And when was that?
Recently.
Is that something that just occurred then? Or, because we're seven months into the year, when did the, when did it actually happen?
My understanding is that this would have occurred in the creation of the 2024 budget. We calculated manually all of our payroll liabilities, and then we transfer that data manually from our payroll workbooks into the department workbooks, which is then transferred from the department workbooks manually into the comprehensive budget document. I believe that it was an inadvertent miss.
Okay. Lindsay, with my understanding, it was just in certain areas that the calculation of the increase in the para wasn't uniformly done across all the departments. It was missed in a couple instances.
It was only identified in the attorney's office.
So. Granted, we wouldn't like to see that, but at the end of the day, I mean, human error is possible, and especially in light of the fact that.
The amount of accounts that we are transferring from one workbook to the next workbook to the next broader workbook, there is a, there's opportunities for error. Though we review the heck out of these and we do our best to make sure it's not there, it is possible that they inadvertently got excluded.
Does our system now, going forward, have the ability for uniformity in certain categories? Like, well, I guess even par is varies depending on what union you belong to. So, even the uniformity there still requires a certain amount of manual input. It's just a matter of if you can limit the number of times you have to manually input the information.
As we move forward, we have the Oracle Fusion system. We have intent to use that for the 2025 budget, 2026 budget, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We are still currently working with our very manual process at the moment.
Okay. Well, just, can we have more of a guideline, maybe a directive, that we get more of an explanation on these budget amendments, Mr. Chair?
I think so, too. That's absolutely perfectly fine.
I, in fairness to everybody, I tried to do my research before getting to the big room, and I didn't, wasn't able to get it. That's why we're talking about it today. But if we got the background ahead of time, I mean, it saves us all time and people time in the woodshed, as people sometimes call the podium, but, okay?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, if I can make a comment on one other, too, and maybe get some clarification as to there was a suicide prevention grant. I know Commissioner Catchmark has had some questions on, and maybe just get some clarification as to exactly what that is for, so that we all are aware of what we're voting on. Because there's some information that's changed since I talked to you this morning, Mike. So, I don't know if, someone from HHS, Jim, if you could speak about that quickly, about what that's about?
Yeah. Well, Mr. Chair and Board, let me make my apologies for our alphabet soup here in Health and Human Services. The FPSP grant is the Family Planning Special Projects Grant, not Family Planning Suicide Prevention. At the time, we were submitting this changed budget for family planning. We were also working through suicide prevention, and I was associating SP with suicide prevention in my head. I am so sorry. This is the, this is a budget amendment for the grant that was approved back at the February board meeting for Family Planning Special Projects, which had been, which has been renamed as Sexual Reproductive Health Grant.
Mr. Chair.
Does that help?
I don't, I didn't see any reference to that in the material. Didn't we look something up, and we found it all related to suicide prevention, didn't we?
And that's what I wanted Jim to clarify, is that the FSPS grant was?
There is, there is another grant that does, that is specifically for suicide prevention, if you looked that one up.
Well, I didn't, because it wasn't provided, but.
Right.
I guess I just don't want something slipped through here on the family planning side, because I've been clear on my position in the past, and I got kind of a mixed message on what happened.
Well, it was approved on the vote, the majority of the board.
But I wasn't sure on what was approved, actually, when we see here, family planning slash suicide prevention, or saying to God, turned around.
So? Yeah.
Do you want to speak?
Well, I was just going to say, because I was here at the February board meeting, and at that time, it was clear it was Family Planning Special Projects. It was not mixed up at the time of the, at the, when the board approved it, for the language of the approval from the board. We were talking about Family Planning Special Projects.
Yeah. It was just this budget amendment that was put through and that we submitted in June. That was where I had told Janice, hey, this is Family Planning Suicide Prevention, because they were, the SP in my head at the time was Suicide Prevention, because we were working on the Suicide Prevention Grant.
But there was no inaccuracy at the time that it came forward to the board in February.
Right.
And there was a discussion, and your remarks were stated at that time, so.
Okay.
And yes, we would not, we would not attempt to, to subvert any kind of transparency or anything like that. This was, we, if we do call it alphabet soup, there is a lot of different acronyms. But just to clarify, this is the Family Planning Special Projects Amendment to that grant that was approved in February.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Catchmark?
No, that, that covers those two.
With that, I'll stand for a motion to approve the item C3, the, approve the attached budget amendments through June 2024.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Catchmark.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe, same sign. All right. Motion passes unanimously. Next is item E1, the approve the request to rehire a senior TSS position within IT. Thank you, Mr. Fombi. I'll start off. Do you want to, Mr. Fombi, start off with this kind of clarifying? Or do you want to?
Instead of a fishing expedition, could I maybe point to why?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Could we put up the org chart?
Yes.
For that? There was a nice org chart provided. Thank you, Mr. Fombi, for that one. Helpful. As we wait for that to come up, reference that intern position. Was there any job duties or description provided for what the intern would do or has done?
In the past, the intern has helped out with things like our auctions. We're not allowed to get rid of any equipment, period. We have to auction it off, even if it's only a penny. So, the intern will help out with things like that. They help out with little things around the office, and they just bring somebody into the office and gets trained. In fact, Jacob Swanson, who's currently one of our system engineers, he actually started as an intern, got hired as a TSS, was hired as a senior TSS, was hired as a system engineer, and come September, is actually getting promoted to warrant officer in the United States Navy, and is going to be going, or, I'm sorry, Army. He should have been in the Navy. That was his mistake. But, and is going to be going to training. So, it's been a successful program to bring new people into Wright County. It exposes them to the county, gives us an opportunity to get some work done from them, and we do it intermittently. It's not a scheduled thing. It's every once in a while.
Okay. So, there wasn't anything in the material, like you have for the senior tech specialist, as far as duties or what they do, or?
Help out in general assistance. A lot of times, they'd man the front desk, things of that nature.
Okay.
It is a good to bring in, not vital.
Are they, what kind of pay scale do you use for that?
Intern pay scale is fair, I want to say it's, honest to God, I think it's less than target.
That's all we got?
I don't even want to, I don't even want to throw the numbers off the hicks.
Anybody know?
My numbers are probably a couple years old.
Mr. Chair, members of commission, each department kind of sets their own intern pay scales that they have within their budget. I can look that up as we move forward.
I think it all depends, too, on the, on the qualifications that, some of them are graduates.
Ours always, no, ours always have to be in school and things of that nature. Usually a student, usually sophomore, junior, that kind of thing. I think the highest intern we had for budget last year was $18 an hour.
Okay. Thanks.
If they want to make the big money, the big money, they generally go to Burger King.
Okay. All right. So, then moving to the TSS. I see, as I'm reading that, when you look across, the TSSB is not a lead position. They?
No, that's just because I couldn't stack them all underneath. There were some space constraints there.
Okay. So, they fall along the lines, there's seven of those TSSs.
Yes.
And then this would be to rehire the TSS, which is?
The senior.
Which would be senior to those seven?
Yes.
Okay. And then above that, we have a TSS. So, and you follow the process and the consensus with the board was, all these rehires would come to consent. If we wanted to pull them, we could, for our own reasons or group effort. And so, that's what I did today. In kind of general, across the county, and I think just business-wise, we're looking at how many supervisors per staff that we're seeing. And by my math here, if we take that TSS team one away, we're left with a TSS supervisor that's supervising seven people.
Yes and no. So, the issue we have currently at the moment is the senior TSS actually has some very specific duties that are elaborated on above a TSS. So, for example, the senior TSS runs the update program. So, they update all 900 computers across the county. So, they push those things. At the end of this year, we have to push a Windows 11 upgrade, because Windows 10 is reaching end of life. So, we got to upgrade to Windows 11. They will be having that. That is their specific duty, in addition to being a higher level. So, TSS takes a job, fix this computer. They hit a roadblock. They'll elevate it to senior TSS. The senior TSS gives a shot at it. Senior TSS also liaises directly with Dell for any repairs, as well as the infrastructure team in order to elevate things to a higher level. Without the senior, I can't have a TSS do things like, because those duties are specifically called out in the job descriptions. The job descriptions are actually very different. That would be having a TSS operating outside of scale. Now, the intention was to hire a TSS and then leave that TSS position open. So, it'd still be budget positive in the long run. We're still saving money. But I need that position, because amongst other things, like I said, they push all the updates, and you don't want to end up in a position like we were last Friday, where the entire world shuts down because somebody pushed the wrong update, which is exactly what that was. Somebody pushed an update incorrectly, and the world shut down. And that job specifically, and all of IT, is pushed with pushing those updates to the laptops. The other problem is, like I said, we're really happy about the fact that one of our people was selected as a warrant officer in the Army, but they're going to have to go to six months' training. So, I'm going to be down a system engineer here come September for about six months. So, I'm already going to be light. I can't pull a system engineer to do that sort of thing, because I'm going to be down that. I really do need that senior TSS to complete those sorts of actions and act as that intermediate for the higher level stuff. They also handle like bigger projects that come along at the TSS level, but just more, requires more technical expertise. And I use the term maturity, but that's not necessarily one I want to use. But that's what that job does. So, at the end of the day, we're hiring in-house. We'd already been approved to do this previously, and for the first time to hire for a system engineer, the senior TSS applied. He had never applied for the two previous options, but he applied this time, and I said, pick the right person for the job, and they picked him. So, that's why we're here again. Otherwise, we would have simply hired one of the TSSs for a system engineer, and it would have been done with two months ago. So, I really do need that position, because I can't have a TSS do it, because they'd be definitively working out of class. And the TSS supervisor is dividing his time too much between elevating things, handling budgets, and acquisitions, and things of that nature. So, it really does leave me a big hole. And being down a system engineer at the end of the year creates a bigger hole. So, I'm okay being down a TSS. I'm not okay being down a senior TSS operationally, because I do not absolutely want to put us in a situation where the entire county can't work because somebody pushes the wrong patch.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And thank you for that explanation. So, the TSS supervisor supervises the TSS team one.
Yes.
I know you don't, you don't prefer, because they're, they have a lot of work already, but are they capable to do those duties, being they're the supervisor of the TSS?
He could do them, but that would be dividing his time amongst two major positions, and that's a lot of work for one person. I'd prefer, like I said, if you want to save money, I'd prefer to have, we're going to hire from within. It's going to be one of the TSS. They meet their qualifications. I'd prefer to hire that way and leave the TSS position open. That was the original marching orders I got like a year ago, was that after this entire thing happened, we were going to leave a TSS open and save money that way.
Okay. Any other board members have any comments?
Nope. Mr. Chair?
Yep.
If there's no other comments, I'll make a motion to approve the request to rehire senior technical support specialists and IT intern as requested.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Dietrich.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-1. All right. Moving on to the timed agenda. First one here, the, which is now the 9/20, 9:05. Captain O'Malley making his way up here.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board. I hope you're all doing well today.
Yes.
So, some questions in regard to the Aramark contract. This is a renewal of, it's more of a service agreement than it is a contract, per se. We're not actually buying any, any equipment or anything. We're paying for meals. This is just on a per-meal basis. Meal cost, the meal costs cover not only the food, but they also cover the labor and the management of the kitchen services within the, within the jail. We budget, or we pay for separately all the equipment, the maintenance, the upkeep of the kitchen stuff. Aramark people are responsible for cleaning, cooking, purchasing, and servicing all the, making all the meals and all that throughout the contract. The contract, the way it's set up, it is on a sliding scale. On meal costs, the fewer the meals, the higher the cost. The more the meals, the lower the cost. It's all on a ability to purchase is where that comes from. Volume buying is cheaper than buying small amounts. But in average, the cost of our meals, regardless of where we're at with our count, is right around $8,500 a week. That's why, when the count goes up, the cost stays about the same for us. That's, we get more efficient that way. We've got, for this year, we had a, it's a three-year extension. We've been in this contract since 1999 with Aramark. I do talk to other food service companies. We, and we sit down and we'll have a discussion. So, we're actually doing an apples-to-apples comparison of what they can provide versus what we have. No one's even put forth a, I had one time, I think, three years ago, I had another company actually put forth a bid, and it was within $2,500 of what we're currently paying when we figured it out. So, to make those kinds of changes for $2,500, possibly, didn't seem to make a lot of sense for us. As far as other, I can tell you, in the last three years, foods, food costs have grown immensely. I am aware of, throughout the state, of a number of jails, especially those that go out for bid, which the larger portion does, because it's low, it's low bid typically is what they take. They're, they were looking at 10 to 30-plus percent increases over the last three years. We have not experienced that. We've, we've stayed between, I think, two and a half, two to three and a half percent over probably the last five years. And this year, we got a 0.3535. I think I've answered. I think I've covered everything in our contract. Do we have any questions about what we're doing or how we're doing it?
Well, I will say, at least, good or bad, however you want to look at it, at least we keep a pretty consistent jail population. If, I think where you see those big increases are when you start seeing the populations drop down to the 30, 40, 50 population side of it, because it just gets too hard for them to recoup the, the cost.
Actually, they, the last three years, that's not been the case. The last three years, because, because of low bid situations, they bid a contract at the beginning of a, of a cycle and thinking those costs will carry over, and they don't. And they haven't prepared for potential increases. And so, counties actually had food services walking out, not being able to fill their contracts.
Yeah.
Last minute. I know a couple of years ago, Lee brought that up, because he was getting calls from other counties, too, that were experiencing that, and wondering what we were doing different, that we weren't having the same kinds of problems, but.
It's hard for them to make any money if you're, if you're only having 20, 30, 40 people in there. Their volume charts don't even kind of, that's on the very bottom of them, so they, they couldn't charge enough to be able to make it turn, be profitable.
Right.
Yeah.
Chair, question?
Yes.
What is our general population on average of a, you know?
Oh, the overall population? We're running about 150 a day right now.
Okay.
I think this morning it was 151.
Because you had this, this, I was looking at the table, but it doesn't say what our general is, so.
No, it changes, and that scale fluctuates based on whatever we order a day for meals. So, every day, we order, every morning, we order meals based on what our count is in the afternoon, because the count changes throughout the day. So, we order at each mealtime what we want for meals So we order at each mealtime what we want for meals for that particular meal.
Oh, OK.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to also thank you for partnering with Aramark with the Into Work program.
Yes.
It's been very successful. So I, I think that goes hand in hand with the contract. I appreciate that.
Thank you. It's working really well. Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And thanks for coming in. Did you give my phone message this morning?
No, I did not.
Oh, OK. I wish you would have because you, I had, I'd asked questions, but I thought I had, for the answers figured out. But the one remaining was, so there was these extra treats that people can buy for family members that was part of this, right?
Yep.
And we get commission because we charge above what the cost is of those, right?
Yes.
OK. But this is the overall meal piece that.
Yeah, so those, the, the programs don't actually add any cost to this. They're above and beyond. So Aramark makes whatever money. If you have a person in jail that you want to buy a hamburger for, you can order it through there. We have a connection, our website, or Aramark has a website that you can order it through and they'll get that order. They'll, they sell that and that has nothing to do with our jail, other than we allow them to do that. And when they, when we allow them to do that, we get a percentage of whatever those sales. And they're not huge. These are new programs for the most part. We're just starting them out. But it, because we get family members that don't want to put money on an inmate's books, but they want to do something for their inmate. And so things like this allow them to control what that person spends money on. You know what I mean? Does that make sense?
And that's part of this contract, right?
It's allowing them, yeah, so Aramark. And there are things like burritos, hamburgers, you know, things like that that they wouldn't typically get through the jail food service.
Mm-hmm. OK, thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other questions, board members? Otherwise, I'll stand for a motion to approve the signatures on the contract amendment with Aramark.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Dietrich, second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We have a 9:30 public hearing.
Oh, yep. Yep. All right. At this time, it is 9:30. We will go to open up the public hearing on the property tax abatement for SJB Holdings LLC. At this time, if there's anyone here in the public that would like to come forward and speak regarding the property tax abatement for the property in Montrose, Minnesota, Wright County, please come forward at this time and state your name for the record. Would anyone like to speak? Would anyone like to speak? Is there anyone like to speak or comments for the record? Hearing none. At this time, we will close the public hearing and bring it up here to the dais for discussion. All right. Board members, at this time, we have a resolution before us to authorize signatures approving a property tax abatement and business subsidy agreement with SGB, SJB Holdings, which was discussed and vetted through the county EDA. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, I have just a couple of comments on that. I, I understand also with this agreement, the city is going to be participating in the tax abatement. And then they brought this forward to the EDA and I'm part of the EDA and we moved it forward to here. And looking as a whole, even as our budget moving forward, even decisions today, I, I was curious if we could reduce our amount or our cap, I guess, that we, that we could put on that. I didn't know if that, we were past that point. I would, I would like to reduce it about $50,000 over that nine-year period. So we're still contributing. But there's some, you know, even items coming up on our agenda that if we could save money long-term for other, for those priorities, I think we would be offering a, still a subsidy to this with the tax abatement, but just reducing that cap.
I guess it would, the question would be then, does it change the applicant's appetite to move forward? I couldn't state, I don't know where they are on it. Clay, do you have some comments on it?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I don't know. I would have to speak with the applicant to determine if that would change their appetite to move forward. To answer Commissioner Dietrich's question, yes, you can change that amount. We would have to change the agreement to reflect a reduction in it. And we'd probably want to have a conversation with the applicant to see if that would impact their decision to move forward.
For sure. And the total over nine years is $365,000 in tax abatement, correct?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and board members, correct. Between the city and the county, I believe that's the total amount. The county's cap was at 165. And just to explain how we get there, our policy says that we follow what the city's going to do as sort of our baseline of how we move forward. And we followed the same calculations that the city did where they did sort of a ratchet down over nine years where it started the first four years abating 100% of the property taxes and then it moved down from 75, 50 and 25 in subsequent years.
Understood.
And you're, you're asking the county to reduce their, their abatement down to 115 from 165?
Correct. If that's possible to have that discussion, certainly I wouldn't, I don't know that it's an all or nothing. I want to make that decision here either, either reduce it or nothing. I just think having that conversation and see if that still works for the business.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have a question if making that change, since we had our EDA caps on when we agreed to that figure, if we have to route it back to put our caps on for EDA to change the dollar amount?
At this point, it's the county board's decision to abate. The EDA is just a recommending body to the county board for the abatement. So we wouldn't have to run it back to the EDA for their opinion.
OK.
So I, I'm a little hesitant to just universally make that adjustment without having the conversation with the applicant, largely because I don't want to lose a, a good business opportunity here in Wright County to bring their business from elsewhere in Minnesota to Wright County just on a, a last-minute change without having that conversation with them. I don't believe that this item is necessarily time-sensitive. So I think we could hold it off to the next agenda. Is there, there's, I should qualify that, Clay. I don't know of any time sensitivity on it, but.
And, yeah, Mr. Chair and board, I, I don't know if Elizabeth knows their schedule because I don't know if, I'm not familiar with their planned construction schedule and if this would impact it. I see she may be looking it up back there right now.
And Mr. Chair. And I think I said this before, but there's no guarantee that even if he wouldn't get any of the money, that he wouldn't still build here. Now, if I'm a good businessman and want to use some gamesmanship, I would lead to believe that if I don't get this, I'm going to Carver County. But we don't know that for sure.
We don't know that for sure. And there can be contingencies that, that his, this abatement, his financing may be tied to getting this abatement that, that could change the project immensely, either in scope or in just the entirety of it be able to move forward. That's largely the bigger concern is how much of his financing is tied to needing this abatement. So.
Do you need a motion on that or just?
Well, your motion is to, you have a couple of different options. Or you can approve it as is, you can approve it with the modification, or you can, we can table it. Oh, I was waiting to find out if Elizabeth had any idea of any time sensitivity on it if we tabled it to be able to have a discussion with the applicant. My first initial perspective would be either tabling it or approving it as is. I would hesitate without talking to the applicant about approving it with the modification at this time.
Right. I'll make a motion to table it until, for the discussion with the applicant and bring it back at a later date.
So I'm going to put a time date to bring it back on August 6th because I, I just want to make sure that we get this discussion with them. So you have a motion by Commissioner Dietrich. Was that a second by Commissioner Holland? To table the resolution for authorizing signatures approving tax abatement for the SJB Holding Company with the discussion about a modification in the reduction of the abatement And if there's any justification or do you want to share with that? I'll let you get that off the record with, for them. All right?
Thank you.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. The item, a E2 is tabled to August 6th. All right. Moving on to F is the Finance Taxpayer Service Adopt Amendment to, oh, no, we got to move back, sorry. I moved to the public hearing.
910, Chad Olson.
910. Thanks for, I caught myself there. Thought we were going to be able to skip through a few things. All right. Chad making his way up here.
Tell my doctor I'm not using both, both crutches, so we're good.
You're just too proud, right?
Yeah, a little stubborn, but no, it's all good. Chairman Vetch, Commissioners, we have two items. The, the first item is to approve MnDOT Agency Agreement 1057290 and adopt corresponding resolution for the MnDOT Joint Powers Contract. This is for the engineering reimbursement for the two roundabouts we're doing on their trunk highways at 113 and 25 and CASA 14 and 12.
All right. Any discussion, board members?
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll make that motion to approve this contract and just really happy those, those are really good projects and that they're moving forward with the engineering this year, all ready for next year.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Dietrich.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Catchmark to approve the MnDOT Agency Agreements, Contract Number 1057290 and course, adopt corresponding resolutions. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, Commissioner Catchmark.
Aye.
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 Resolution passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. And there'll be separate agreements for once the construction funds too, so. Second item before you today is to award Contract 2406, the CASA 5 Federal Bridge Replacement Project, subject to MnDOT approving the award letter from the MnDOT Office of Civil Rights. The CASA 5 Bridge will, we don't have word from the contractor yet. The contract allows for construction either this fall or next summer, just to open it up for more bidders. And we haven't got final word yet. So once we get final word on when they want to build it, then we'll update everybody. So.
All right.
We'll recommend an award.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's a lot of entities involved with bridges and water, but I didn't expect to see Civil Rights Office involved. But I'll approve that contract award as stated.
All right.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Dietrich to approve Contract Number 2406 for CASA 5 Federal Bridge Replacement Project. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I've been across that bridge. It's a well-needed repair. It's going to be a really great improvement once that, once that bridge is, is done.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
All right.
Thank you, Chad. All right. Ross has been waiting back there so patiently, coming forward to adopt a resolution related to a grant application through the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission for construction of a trailhead and parking lot at Stanley Eddie Park.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Staff is requesting the board to adopt a resolution related to the grant application through the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission for the construction of a trail parking lot at Stanley Eddie Park. This project would be located right off of Pleasance. There's an ease between the two south units. There is a property acquisition just for this specific trailhead back in 2022 through the same legacy funds. So this would include overnight or parking for day use backpackers and equestrian horse trailers and also include vault toilet and a solar-powered well, potentially electric well, depending on how we are able to access power there. And this is just a, just to go after a grant, the grant itself, where it's estimated to be around $310,000. So with a fund, matching fund of $35,000, which would come out of our site improvement.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Dietrich.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
As a park board, this is a priority and it would be a great improvement for that park.
Agreed. Yeah, it's a very heavily used area that we have kind of an unimproved parking area right now that's used quite often and there's really nothing else off of Pleasance, so. Agreed.
Very good. Any other discussion? All right. Resolution vote, I'll vote aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Ross.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're 9:20. Lindsay has been waiting back there ever patiently as well to approve a, adopt a recommendation from the Wright County Aggregate Tax Committee.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. The Aggregate Tax Committee was created two years ago. Just as a refresher on where we got to where we are today for this. Two years ago, we created this. We have two townships representing the township and one city is appointed as well as we've got commissioners, we've got P&amp;Z representatives, and I have delegated Lindsay Salo as the representative from my department on this. So I don't want to steal her thunder. She's pulled together a presentation on the committee activities and the recommendation.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning.
All right. Thank you. Well, I can start while she gets that up. So as Lindsay kind of described, this program is intended to help Wright County complete projects that meet our county objectives. The grant aims to fund projects that will facilitate restoration of abandoned aggregate pits, or if there are no abandoned aggregate pits, then we move on to other unmet reclamation needs, conservation projects and other environmental projects. The people that can apply for this grant are county departments, cities, townships, schools and lake improvement districts, which we call Lids for short. We have decided as a committee that we will fund up to $80,000 annually, no more than $40,000 per project, and requests cannot exceed 80% of the total project cost. So they do have to contribute some in-kind labor or materials or something like that. And go to the next slide. Here is our scoring criteria. I'm not going to go through all of it. A lot of it is the same, but we do have two sets primarily because one is for the reclamation of abandoned pits and the other is for the conservation projects. So we have weighted it in a way that any abandoned pit will score high because that is our statutory, or statutory requirement. So this year, we opened the applications in April. They were due to me June 15th. The committee met at the end of June to review and form the recommendations that I'm presenting to you today. We received five applications this year that were eligible and we are recommending four for funding. Here are the projects. The first one, of course, is the pit reclamation submitted by the Wright County Highway Department. The next two were very similar to projects that were submitted last year. So we've got one from Buffalo School District, one for City of Monticello, both for native grasses, prairie restoration. So for that reason, we did decide to recommend funding at half level because very similar projects were submitted last year and we would like to encourage some variety. We had one from the Plaski Lake Improvement, or Lake Improvement District. We decided not to recommend funding for that one because it was a temporary project. These projects should be longer term in nature. And then we finally have the City of Atsigo who submitted an observation well that we recommended for full funding. So was there any questions or a discussion?
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to add, it was really good discussion going over the point scores and the, and then just how to divvy up the money between the, the different applicants. It just was really, we had a really good discussion as a group, so.
Yeah.
All right. No, appreciate the time and effort that both of you put into it. I think you got some good recommendations here. Now, at this time, I'll stand for a motion if there's no other comments.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Dietrich, second by Commissioner Holland, to approve the, uh, recommendations for the Wright County Aggregate Tax Committee, uh, grants. All right. Hearing no other discussions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Lindsay. Tyler, and Lindsay's going to stay up here as well. And we have to adopt the Resolution 2417, establishing the absentee ballot board.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, we're here today to amend our previously passed ballot board resolution. It came to our attention from the legal department. There were some changes we needed to make to conform with past litigation. I think in 2023 that occurred. So, uh, these changes are to conform to the new language. The major change is that our original resolution said the board will consist of election judges, and so the litigation stated that it must say must consist of election judges. So, we've made those changes. Uh, we've also presented a list of ballot board members, uh, or election judges who will be, uh, deciding on those, those ballots that come in. So, we have that list presented for you as well, um, at the end of that resolution. So, we just ask for your support.
All right. Any discussion, board members?
Mr. Chair, just thank you for catching that and making these corrections.
Yeah, if I may add, we'll also bring up another resolution sometime in August or September. We're going to be opening up our clerk hiring, uh, in August. So, we'll be inviting, uh, new ballot board members and election clerks. So, we'll be sure to post a notice, uh, on the county website and other, uh, resources to let the public know about that. I think that was an ask. And so, we're more than happy to, uh, let folks know about that opportunity. I think there was a lot of interest when we posted it back in the spring. And so, we're looking forward to see, uh, who's going to come in to help, uh, support our ballot board. So, we'll be coming back to you sometime in August or September.
Perfect.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended Resolution 2417.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Holland.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dietrich. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, resolution?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. And now, we have the Item F2, the approval of a large group assembly permit for up to creek. Uh, this is one that was continued on from our previous board meeting. Uh, I see that there's a lot more documentation in here. So, uh, any discussion, board members?
Just looking to attend.
All right. Great. At this time, I will, if there's no other discussion or comments, uh, I appreciate the efforts that the staff and, uh, the applicant has put into, putting in, uh, a complete application. Uh, greatly appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think at the, when I was looking at the notes from our previous board meeting, it suggested a variance for the music to be turned off at 12:00 PM, I believe, just to allow for time to get folks out of the building by 1:00 o'clock. I'm just not sure if you wanted to entertain that again for this year, but just wanted to throw that out there.
So, the, okay, so currently, right now, they're...
It may already be in place. I think it was just something, um, that was suggested that they, the band cuts off at midnight.
It was a stated, it was a stipulation of their application that, that was previously last year, that the music had to end at midnight. So, that, yep, so they could get people cleared out by 1:00.
Did we put that in the ordinance, though?
It's not in the ordinance, I believe. Um, it is just, it was a stipulation that we put in condition, uh, kind of a condition of the perm, large assembly permit, that the music had to end by, uh, midnight.
And you're saying that's not in there currently? I thought I saw...
I, I haven't suggested as a variance, just as we brought it up from the previous meeting. So, just something to consider for this, inspired issuance.
Yeah, because otherwise, the concern was, because their law enforcement contract ends at 1:00. If they play music till 1:00, uh, they, then law enforcement is gone at the time when the music is ending, and basically, people haven't dispersed yet, potentially.
It worked out well last year. It was fine with that stipulation, honestly.
That's what most cities do, too, is midnight.
Yep. So, then I, uh, what I would do is I would stand for a motion to approve the large assembly permit with the, uh, stated condition that music end at, uh, 12:00 midnight.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Holland?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dietrich. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Should be a very fun weekend. Should be a hot one there out there on Saturday at, uh, 90 degrees, they're saying.
Oh, gosh.
Thank you. 100 people are interested in going. According to Facebook.
All right. Very good. Uh, now, moving on to the G...
Oh, 9:50, sir.
9:50. We're right on time. Look at that. We caught back up. I didn't think we could do it. Uh, so, right this time, uh, Mr. Matice to approve a agreement with the University of Minnesota Extensions. Uh, Lori's making her way up here.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Lori was able to make it today, so we'll let Lori handle this one. Uh, I do know this is typically something you'd like to consider at budget time for 2025. However, our partner counties are considering it here in July, with Meeker County approving on July 2nd. McLeod County is also considering the, uh, updated memorandum of agreement with the University of Minnesota 4-H Extension today, as you are as well. So, we'll let Lori talk more about it.
Chair, members of the board, thanks for having me. Um, I think most of you know a little bit about this contract. It's a three-year contract. Uh, we ask for renewals across all, the, across the entire state, 87 counties every three years. Our contracts are up this year, so this is the new year. Uh, but what's different this year is that there is a more significant increase in the contract rates for our staff. Um, just like everybody else, we've been having issues attracting and retaining talent. Our fringe costs have gone up, uh, and under the last contract, we couldn't make any of those adjustments. So, they're, they're made this year. It's a one-year adjustment in the price, and then the following two years of the contract, we go back to a 3% cost of living increase. So, the contract that is in your packet today is a status quo as far as staffing. It's the same staff we've had. Uh, Wright County is in a partnership with Meeker and McLeod Counties, like Mark was saying. Uh, and that funds three educators. Uh, those of you who know, sorry that it's information you already have, but, um, I think we're quite proud of this partnership because instead of having one educator that has to know everything about everything, you guys have experts. So, you have an expert in horticulture, an expert in livestock, uh, and an expert in crops, and you share that expertise with Meeker and McLeod. Meeker and McLeod County, uh, counties both did approve their contracts at their previous board meeting. Uh, so that is a done deal. So, I think they're eagerly awaiting what Wright County's going to do here, uh, to maintain that partnership. Uh, then you also fund, uh, 1.375, uh, positions to take care of the 4-H program here in Wright County, uh, and then interns to help out with that work as well, summer interns. So, it's a small but mighty staff, uh, and this new contract would keep that status quo. So, we're asking for approval of that new contract today.
So, board members, I'll kind of speak to on this briefly. Uh, we, myself and Commissioner Dietrich, we vetted this quite well. Uh, this contract is a largely front-loaded contract. Uh, subsequent years, uh, the increase is, uh, much more, uh, mundane. Hence, the reason this contract was largely front-loaded is because it was catching up, the previous contract did not, uh, keep up with the hyperinflation. Uh, so, it was made out, negotiated out almost four years ago for the three years that it served. But during that three years, there was hyperinflation, so they had to make the adjustment to catch back up. Uh, that's where they're at. So, the choices are right now at this point is either we, the board would approve the three-year contract, or otherwise, if it chose not to, uh, the only way to reconcile the dollar amounts would be to remove some of the potential shared positions that we have with our partner counties, or, uh, one of our, or some of the hours from our 4-H, uh, facilitator, I guess I call it, yeah. Um, which I would caution on the 4-H position. This is one that they've been asking for increasing on staff, but we've, uh, held the line on it now for, I think, what, about four years?
Longer than that, sir.
Probably, you and I go a long time back on this. But I, I will give you a handoff that the numbers have continually increased year after year. Uh, I've had the, uh, privilege to attend some of those 4-H meetings, so seeing the involvement is great. Uh, so I, I would caution board members from going backwards on an area that the growth and involvement is increasing. Um, but I'm open for discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to also add that the, the contracts for employees was negotiated with the team, um, from AMC, and that did include county commissioners on the board. And so, just to have that input, um, and I'll also add that I've, I've seen and, and worked with SWCD and, and then these, these educators. They work hand-in-hand, and they're doing just, they just, a great job in Wright County, honestly. Um, and then with 4-H as well, they just add more to those, to those programs. So, I, I would really encourage us to approve, um, this agreement with the University of Minnesota Extension. I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Ketchmark.
Thank you. Thanks, Lori, for coming in. I just like, it's interesting, the other counties, I thought everyone was kind of on the same kind of budget schedule, and they kind of in haste, it sounds like, approved this already. But is there any input from finance about how this affects our process to have one come in this early? Is that any difference in how things are figured?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Ketchmark, it does affect us. It is basically, it's not necessarily a pre-approval, but you're approving 2025 budget before you're approving any departmental 2025 budget.
Okay.
You're close to the same amount of time. We can figure it in if we know about it, and we can, we'll have discussions as usual.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I didn't draw the attention to the budget with extension. They did, in fairness. So, I'm going to bring something else up. Earlier in the meeting, we approved, uh, HVAC cost of which I found is over $200,000 to the building that they occupy, Public Works down the block. Uh, in looking, I mean, just for consistency, we have a lot of outside entities that are paying rent to use space here. I asked the staff on the legalities of charging rent, and it really doesn't address that. So, at the proper time, I want to talk about the fairness and, and potentially charging rent for usage of this space like we do everybody else. AmeriCorps, EDP, Dental Clinic, everybody pays. And we haven't found a statute that exempts them. So, this is budget. They want, it's not just take. There's some potential give-and-take here. I see a frown from Mr. Chair, but I guess at the proper time, I'd like to talk about it.
I, I guess what they would, would, would it articulate down to, it... Whether you, you, you think of them as a department, or you don't think of them as a department, they are a department. So, it's no different than if we started charging rent to the veteran services. Uh, they're just going to come right back to you and ask for the money to, to pay for that rent. You're, you're not getting ahead on it. So, your choices would be, okay, we can charge extensions rent, but they're going to say, well, you have two options. Either we get rid of, uh, our 4-H hours of our educator, or we don't pay rent. I mean, those are the choices. So, either you, you remove services and, and charge rent. I mean, it doesn't, you, their money isn't coming from anywhere but us.
Yeah, Commissioner Ketchmark, it's an unusual arrangement, but it is a department of the counties, so it would be like the county charging itself rent.
And they do that. The county charges...
Charge back kind of a thing. Yeah, then, then Commissioner Vets is correct. We would have to look for that money within our existing budget. And the, our budget is tiny, and so the only place we have to go is staff. That's, that's it.
But, Mr. Chair, the books do show we aren't collecting rent from everybody, aren't we?
No.
Mr. Ketchmark, no, that is not correct. We typically, in general, we only charge rent when we have an outside funding opportunity. Grants, um, are our primary example where we do charge rent to the department because that is an overhead expense that they can recoup, and we can get some of that paid back. In instances, for, for the most part, our departments are not charged rent.
The vast majority do not.
Correct.
See, I thought they were due to an arrangement with HHS that required everybody to pay. So, you can find a column that everybody paid.
Nope. That is only a specific grant-related, um, situation.
All right.
There is some other departments that pay rent.
Yes, there are.
The Sheriff's Office pays rent for the corruption, so I don't want to say it's all grant-related. I just want to clarify that.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Dietrich to approve the University of Minnesota Extensions Program Agreement, uh, for 2025 through 2027. Do you have a second?
I'll second, but I do want to say, um, I'm not happy that it's coming at this time and not during the budget process time. I'm very disappointed in the other counties as well. Um, it kind of, it kind of ties our hands, and I, I hope this doesn't happen in the future. If it, if it does continue to be in this, I, I, I will, um, you know, be very disappointed.
Okay. So, we have a second by Commissioner Holland. What I'm going to, I'm going to put a bit of different framework on this. So, this is kind of no different than a union contract in, in the sense that it is ranges, COLAs, and that is where that is adjusted. That, those are done outside of our budget here with our staff. This is something that is done on a more grandiose statewide level that is done through AMC with all their commissioners. And they're basically asking us to approve their, uh, it's not union contract, but it's their labor contract for their employees and what they're getting for ranges and COLAs. And so, the only way for us to, the workers are getting that, those, those pay adjustments no matter what. It's just a matter of how many hours they're going to work for us here in Wright County. That's the only way you can modify it. So, it's not necessarily a budgetary request as it is for us acknowledging this new contract and saying, how much of our money are we going to be able to use based on these new rates for the staff? So, it, I don't want you guys to get it confused as this is a budgetary thing because it's no different than, we have, we already have pre-approved contracts with our unions that are already handcuffing our budgets already. It, so, it, it's really no different than that. So, don't, I don't want you guys to, uh, give extensions a hard time. This is, they are put on this time schedule to get this approved because our sister counties want to know whether we're going to do it or not. Because if we are going to say, no, we don't want to have a horticultural, uh, expert in Wright County, that means that they have to decide, well, either we're going to pick up those hours, or we're not going to have one either. So, they want to know that before budgets.
Mr. Chair, and, and I don't want to minimize our roles as decision-makers either. I didn't write the agenda, but the first word is approve, the second one is agreement. It's not something that's on auto-renew or autopilot. If it is, then why are we here? Why is it on the agenda? So, it is fair. We can discuss and ask questions, and we don't want to minimize or take that away, I don't think.
And that's what I'm not saying. It's not approve or discuss. It's the, the approval choice is, do you want to, how many hours do you want to have for these workers? You, you don't have the ability to say, I don't want to pay this rate. You, you're going to pay that rate per hour for the employees. You get to determine how many hours they're going to work for the county. That's the, the decision. I, I don't want people to think that, well, I think, uh, a COLA of 2.5 is too high. Well, you don't have that choice to modify that COLA percentage. You only have the ability to say, because that COLA is so high, instead of having 1.375 hours for a 4-H educator, we're only going to have a 1.0 for a 4-H educator. I just want to make sure that we're under the understanding.
Yeah, and I, I would speak to the timeline of it. It's not atypical for us to do the contract negotiations separate from the budget because then we have the line item for the budget, uh, especially now that we do have this tri-county partnership. But point noted, you know, I can work with administration in the future to talk about what's most palatable for this board. For the next three years, it won't be an issue because this is a three-year contract. In the next two years, it's a three-year COLA increase, and that's it. Um, but after that, we can talk about what we do.
Thank you, Lori. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Dietrich, second by Commissioner Holland. Uh, I appreciate the good discussion. Uh, at this time, if there's no other comments, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Now, moving on to items for consideration. Uh, it, sorry, pickups. A1 is to, uh, schedule a finance committee of the whole to discuss the 2025 audit suggested dates of July 29th, next Monday. Uh, this is one, we had some discussions earlier. It's a little bit time-sensitive. It became aware to us just late last week that if we intended to want to use the, uh, OSA's office, that we would have to, by resolution, inform them by August 1st. Uh, so that kind of put us under a tight deadline. Uh, so, we, I wanted to have a, a discussion with the board, discussing the pros and cons of, of such a decision versus just, uh, uniformly just jumping into it. Uh, so with that, I want to schedule a committee of the whole next Monday and have a good, robust discussion with some information in front of everyone.
I can't do it.
You can't do it next Monday?
Not on Monday, until noon.
Should we post this Friday?
This week. Could we do it Friday?
I could do Friday morning.
Early Friday because we got some fair activity later. What time?
8:00.
8:00?
Sure.
You can do 8:00 AM Friday morning? All right. So, with that, uh, make, uh, looking for a motion to schedule a committee of the whole, uh, to discuss the 2025 audit, uh, at 8:00 AM.
I can't. I can't make it.
You can't make it 8:00 AM?
No.
All right.
Can we do the 25th, maybe, in the morning, 8:00?
We won't make posting requirements for the 25th. If we post it now, if we do it in the afternoon, does that meet the service on the 25th?
And we have the CMRP that morning there.
We got to have it by the 31st. Is that it?
Yeah, we'd have to have it by the 31st.
How about the morning of the 31st?
Well, we have to, because we have to schedule a special board meeting, uh, to take action on this. If you decide to go with the OSA, we actually have to have a formalized board meeting.
Could we do it in the, after the, could we do the 31st?
If you do it Friday, that's fine. I just won't be here for that.
Will Commissioner Shane be here Friday?
She'll be here Friday, yes.
Well, we got four out of five.
We can have the discussion here. I just, I, I wanted to kind of just slow down this process of going to the OSA's office potentially. Uh, it just, it, it may have...
I, I, Commissioner Vets, um, what I, what I've been relayed to by, uh, um, staff is that if we don't hit this August 1st date, then we cannot do so for two years. Isn't that right, Clay?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we spoke with the Office of the State Auditor, and per state statute, if we want to utilize their office to conduct our audits, we have to let them know by August 1st of even-numbered years for the following year's audit. of even numbered years for the following year's audit. So if we were to notify them August, by August 1st of 2024, then they would conduct 2025's audit. So they would take the books from 2025 and audit them in 2026. So there's about a year lag time. But if the board doesn't decide by August 1st of this year, your next opportunity to request it would be August 1st of 2026.
I guess my thought at this point is, you know, I'm, Wright County has spent a decent, a fair amount of money to fight to get this right, to be able to use any outside auditing firm that it wishes. If it uses to use somebody outside of Clifton, Larson, Allen, I am all about it. I'm not necessarily in favor of using an office that is a potentially politically motivated office. I believe the person that is in this office right now would be very judicial in their work in looking at our numbers. But I always know that the future of that, or even having that office potentially being, having its arm twisted to use it as a politicalized weapon is always there. Hence the reason we spent a great deal of time fighting at the Minnesota Supreme Court to get the right to be able to use outside services for our office. I'm just a little bit cautionary that I want to go back into it, especially not knowing what the cost may be potentially on it as well, because it is built back on an hourly basis. I think if there's concerns about the integrity of our of our current audits, I would be all in favor of of looking at other firms or interviewing other firms. I think that it would be prudent of us to do so. But I don't necessarily know that I want to pass a resolution and lock us in with the OSA's office at this time.
And I, Chairman Vetch, I disagree. I think they'll be fair and impartial. It's just a one-time audit. We're not going to continue the audit process with them. I think we, that's what the state is there for. That office is there to, I I just feel that with the, right now with Clifton, Larson, Allen, and the hiccups that we've had with them, with CMJTS, I feel like it's important to have a non-money-making entity do our books. I think it's nice when the state can come in and objectively look at all of our books. And that's where I'm coming from.
Mr. Chair, I'd agree with Commissioner Holland.
Mr. Chair, I'd hesitate to go towards the state. Obviously, you know, going through audits many times in the past, it's a snapshot. It's not every, you don't go through everything in the book. It's, they pull things out and they make summaries with that. And and I think, I haven't, I haven't been part of the discussions that included if there's problems with our current auditor. If we want to go out for bids for those, I prefer that. I would prefer not going with the OSA.
Mr. Chair, one comment I would like to make, too, is that if we move forward with the OSA, they require that we do two years of audits with them. So we would be obligated to do two years of audits with them. And to the chair's comments, we did ask specifically the auditor if they could give us a quote or a price and/or if they had similar counties that we could compare ourselves to and get an estimate. They cautioned us to not look at similar counties because in their experience, just given financial practices within different counties, it differs so much that they can't really accurately predict how much it would cost. They did say that they bill back on an actual cost basis. So whatever hours they used is what we would be billed, and they couldn't really tell us what that would be until the audit was completed.
The only comment I wanted to add to this conversation, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Holland, it echoes Clay's comment. Typically, in an audit, the audit firm learns a lot about your entity in year one, where it will be more costly with the OSA, whereas when you're looking at an outsider, they typically want you to do a three-year contract so that they can even out their own costs. So it would be a more expensive year one and less expensive, generally speaking, in subsequent years if we stayed with the same audit team, because they understand our system, they understand our internal controls, and it's more of an update to understand whether we've had internal control changes. So that's the only comment I wanted to add, is that there would be benefit in having a longer-than-one-year, whichever direction you decide.
And we just did RFPs from multi-county RFP last year.
Yep.
And for how many years was that?
We're with the other, we're with three other counties. It's for, well, it's a year-by-year from here on out. But we're getting a discount by going with these other counties. Three of us picked the same audit firm, CLA.
For how long?
It's year-by-year, we're going to renegotiate. So we're partnering with Carver, who has the original language, and we're piggybacking on their language. So we don't want to lock ourselves in to getting higher rates, so we want to negotiate on year-by-year. So if they get too high, we want to have the ability to take our three counties and go other places.
Can can we get a new auditing firm?
We can, yeah. We can go separate from them or we can stay on board with them. That's what we chose to try to get the discount by going with multiple counties last year.
Chairman, at this point, it's either the state or another company. And I know that there's probably some cost savings. I know this this would be quite costly. I just feel that they're not serving us well. They are not serving CMJTS well. I just like somebody else looking, looking at all of our processes, a new set of eyes, not a, kind of getting caught in the rut and seeing the same things. So I guess it's up to the board whether, you know, we stick, if we have the state come in or if we, you know, entertain a RFP for another company.
So I'm all favorite, like, we have time here to find another firm if we, we don't have a deadline of August 1st. Yes, we're getting close on a deadline to get somebody else chose if we wanted to go for an RFP for another auditing firm outside of the volume group contract with CLA. Would be in favor of that versus the OSA's office, just because I just have a lot of concerns with the office being a politically endorsed office and potentially having political motivations and as well as the fact that we fought very, very hard to have the right to choose. So.
Mr. Chair, I guess that was the intent, is to schedule this for a discussion as in a committee. I just think of some of those whys that you're insinuating, like, as if our current one has been not doing a good job. And I certainly won't want that out, you know, as publicly that there's something that that they've done wrong. And and I can't, I can't, you know, I would rather have that in a workshop discussion if we're saying we need a different auditor for for certain reasons, honestly.
The only reason I'm saying this precipitated the conversation here, because I agree, it would have been better in a committee, is the fact that with the OSA, we have to notify them by August 1st, and it is a two-year contract. Push come to shove, right now, I'm not going to vote in favor of going with the OSA at this time. I think if we push it out to committee, it's just going to be a no-go because of timing, because the two dates that we threw out there have been shot down. So I guess at this point, I'm more than willing to schedule a date for us to have a meeting to discuss other options outside of CLA. But I think the OSA one, just for lack of interest on a couple of us and then just not the ability to meet as a group to have a discussion prior to the deadline, makes that a no-go option as well. But I'm open to comments.
Mr. Chair, I'm in favor of OSA even more by hearing some of the responses here.
I would like to have the discussion.
So we got Friday or Monday. We have, because we would have to, if we decided to want to go with the OSA, we would have to pass a resolution and hold a special board meeting on July 30th to pass that resolution.
Make a motion, Friday at 8:00 AM?
I'll second.
A motion by Commissioner Holland, second by Commissioner Catchmark to schedule a committee of the whole to discuss the 2025 audit as it pertains to Clifton, Larson, Allen, other firms, and the OSA's office.
Further discussion? Would it be possible to make it 11 o'clock that morning? If I could make it, there's, I have a doctor's appointment.
I, I am out at, I could go at like 10. I can't go any later than 10 because I have another meeting that afternoon, so.
Again, I have, we have the fair.
That's right, because you have, yeah, I have another, so you have the senior citizens at noon. So you have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign?
Aye.
All right, committee of the whole scheduled at 8:00 AM on this Friday.
Mr. Chair.
Three to one.
If there's any material, could we get that? I know that's short notice, but I'd sure like to see whatever there is ahead of time.
Sure, you want to see like the RFP that we sent out to, I think that would be a pertinent one is the RFP that we'd have to it. The communications that we had with the OSA's office, we can include as well. I think that should be a pretty robust enough information. And if there's anything else that you'd like, if you consider, let me know.
I don't know the most asked, so I'm kind of at your mercy, but thank you.
All right. Yeah, Mr. Chair, we can get that info to you. And I was also, so that would be a committee of the whole on Friday. Would the board like to also schedule a special meeting in case there's action required out of that prior to that August 1st deadline? And we could go with like sometime next Tuesday or Wednesday, if that's, works for the board, just so we can meet notice requirements in case.
Yeah, because if you will, we'd have to post it by tomorrow. So we might as, you want to schedule one and we can always cancel it if it's unnecessary? All right, so this through the 9:00 AM on the 30th, like the typical time if that becomes the situation?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Catchmark?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holland to schedule, I guess I'm going to call it a special board meeting, maybe provisional, for July 30th at 9:00 AM to take action on a potential contract with an auditing firm for 2025. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign? All right, motion passes unanimous. All right, review the 2024 Board Workshop Meeting Schedule.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, with the Washington Fly-in in September, we have some conflicts and be limited on number of commissioners. We would like to propose replacing our regular meetings of September 3rd and September 17th with September 10th and 24th, so that we can have the full board and then canceling the workshop for September.
Okay, which one would we be canceling then?
So we would have a, on the 3rd, there would be nothing. Then the 10th, there would be a board meeting. There would be nothing on the 17th because members of the board would be in the DC Fly-in. And then we, so we would have no workshop that month, and then we would go to the 24th for another board meeting.
Okay. What was the proposed dates for budget, 3rd?
We haven't got to that one yet, but that's the next one.
Budget would be in the next scheduling. That would be doing for Budget Committee of the Wholes. Those fall relatively in line with what we're proposing for county board dates.
And just to clarify, the 20th, we will not be having that committee of the whole meeting, correct?
Yeah, we'll discuss that after.
The next, I mean, you guys are jumping ahead. We're on two. We're just talking about the September board schedule. So we're talking about flopping the two Tuesdays and canceling the workshop. So you're no longer going to have a board meeting on the 3rd and 17th. You're going to have a board meeting on the 10th and the 24th, and we are not going to have a workshop. That is what's being proposed.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right, I got a nod, nods. All right, now I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right, motion by Commissioner Holland, second by Commissioner Catchmark. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign? Motion passes unanimous. Now we're on to the budget discussions. So we kind of moved things around and moved some of them earlier, largely trying to accommodate some conflicts that are coming up on the last part prior to Labor Day weekend, trying to free that up for a variety of different people, as well as giving us more time and capacity to have discussions if we need subsequent meetings. So with that, moving some of them, starting on the 31st, here, just coming up in the following week and coming into the week subsequently. There was some discussion, I think, on needing to have the 20th need to end at like early, at like noon? Was it? I know myself, I can go till about 12:30 on the 20th, but I think after 12:30 on the 20th that day, I am unfortunately, maybe I can go to 1 o'clock.
So, Mr. Chair, are we starting with the beginning there, 7:31 and going through?
Yeah, if you want to go through them all, yeah. I think the only one that I knew that there was notable conflicts, I know that you had stated, Commissioner Holland, just here a second ago, and I know myself on the 20th, the afternoon of the 20th is the one day that was a potential conflict.
Yes, and we have some alternate date for 8:20 that we're looking at.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I have collected the availability from some of you, and we've got some options. If we are rescheduling the entirety of the August 20th date, we can do, I understand, most or most are available the 8th, 12th, 13th. The 14th is not an option at this point. So we can do from 12:30 to 4:30 on August 8th, 12:30 to 4:30 on the 12th, 12:30 to 4:30 on the 13th. Those are the options that we need to discuss.
I'm good with any of them.
Me too.
Okay, so the four of you are available. I have no idea on Nadine at this time.
Yep. I guess, yeah, you can reschedule to any one of those dates if you want to check with Nadine, but hopefully one of those got to work. Unfortunately, the one day on the 20th that passed 1 o'clock just. Yep.
And, Mr. Chair, are we crossing off the 14th then altogether?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. I'll just wait for you to send me invites, because I was good with everything else, so.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. I guess I'll wait for the invites. I don't necessarily know that we, do we need to even take action on it this time? Or do you want to just wait till she gets, we have nothing to take action on because we don't know what Commissioner Shane has available. So I'd say at this point, check with her and we'll formalize an approval. Well, we, we need to approve the 31st because that one, we don't have a meeting before.
Right, we need to.
And the 8th.
And the 8th.
And the 12th, please.
Okay.
And if, can we tentatively do the 8th and 12th, extend those through 4:30?
Yep.
And I can confirm, and then we'll get those scheduled. But I'd rather, because we don't have a board meeting between now and then, I think we need to get them scheduled here.
That works. That way we have options and we can always cancel if they're not necessary. All right. So I'll entertain a motion to do, schedule budget committees of the whole for July 31st, August 8th, and August 12th from 10 to, or not, 9 to 4:30?
Sure, yep.
Perfect.
18th, 19th, and September 4th as well.
Okay, and including August 19th and August, or September 4th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM and August 19th from 8:30 AM to 2:30.
Commissioners, I may have misspoke when Commissioner Catchmark asked me about the 14th. We still need the 9 to noon as presented in the agenda. I'm just not extending that from noon to 4:30.
Okay, and.
So as stated.
We're going to approve all of these as printed with extending August 12th to 4:30?
8th, 12th, 14th.
Yep.
Extended to 4:30, and the 20th is next.
Next, yep. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Don't make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Catchmark.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Holland to approve the budget committees of the whole as presented with the removal of August 20th and the change of August 12th from ending at noon to now ending at 4:30.
And August 8th.
All right.
Further discussion?
Any discussion?
Yes, I just, I would just ask, request the ability to attend via Zoom as needed at all for these workshops. It's not a board meeting, but a workshop. I'm just asking the board if that would be allowed.
Open meeting laws doesn't permit us to be able to do committees of the whole remotely. I think you have to have, there's some articulable reasons you have to have for it, and then you have to post the location that you're at as a, yeah, I guess, Greg?
Mr. Chair, let me do some research on it and get back to the board as to the specifics of it. It changed after the pandemic, and I want to make sure that my advice is spot on to how we proceed. But if it's an option, we can always post it for that if it meets requirements.
Absolutely. I'm just, my daughter is expecting a baby. Absolutely, I'm, I'm just, my daughter is expecting a baby in, in that timeframe, and I would like, I would probably more than often than not be in Denver for a short time.
Well, and rightfully so.
But I still think this is important to at least here. Um, if my vote doesn't count, that's fine, but I mean, this is for discussion, if I can just still be part of the discussion.
If we can meet the requirements, I have no problem by it, so.
Thank you.
All right, uh, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? All right, the revised budget schedule is approved unanimously. Approved, the other two items were tabled. Uh, now we are on to the items for consideration would be to adopt the Resolution for Final Acceptance of Contract twenty-two oh eight and authorize final payment to Ninth River for twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-three cents.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Commissioner Holland?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dietrich, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? Oh, it was a resolution, wasn't it? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Yep, so uh, resolution vote, uh, Commissioner Dietrich?
Aye.
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 Resolution passes unanimously. All right. Now we are down to the committee recommendations from the County Board Workshop. Uh, we had just a, a variety of them, the, one was the uh recommendation of the payment to the Wright County EDP, the informational on the uh County Board, or County Fair, sorry. Uh, we had the information on the correctionals, uh, contract, the work release, the we had the information dissemination discussion, uh, we had the front desk was the recommendation to uh direct staff to fully staff the front desk uh with only fifteen-minute absences for breaks and thirty-minute lunch. Uh, we had the uh discussion of the Mayor's Association with the board, uh, agreed for individuals to determine their own uh participation in said membership of the Mayor's Association. Uh, we had a uh, the appointment of Dan Mull as the at-large member for the Board of Adjustments uh for another term. We had the review of the engagement survey, uh, and then we have the uh discussion of the um county fleet and chargeback for the County Board, and then we had the uh information from the closed session uh from the previous board meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve all the recommendations except for number three.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Catchmark to approve the recommendations from the County Board Workshop on July ninth uh with the exclusion of item number three.
Can you state that?
Which one is it?
The one that's.
That would be the uh, the payment to, for twenty-twenty-four for the Wright County Economic Development Partnership. So we have a motion by Commissioner Catchmark uh with uh all the items except for the uh item number three. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, again, I don't think they understand the motion is to.
The motion was to approve all the recommendations except for three.
Right, so no one wants to approve anything?
I think they're just looking to make a separate motion potentially, well. Let me finish my first ask for a second, but there's no discussion until I have a second. Is there a second? Hearing none, motion dies for the lack of a second. Now at this time, we can entertain a, any other motions.
I'll make a motion to approve all the recommendations as stated.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Dietrich uh to approve the recommendations as presented. And we have a second by Commissioner Holland, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, so we didn't spend any time talking about the Employee Engagement Survey Report because we ran out of time or interest or both, I'm not sure, at the workshop. But I'll just reference it for the board that there was at least one question that pertained to the County Board in that survey. And I don't want that to go unnoticed because the three hundred or so people that completed it did uh answer that question. So I guess it's on your own time, you can go look at it, but I want to reference that there is one question in that survey that applied to the County Board. Okay?
Right.
And uh, I, I'm kind of baffled as to why there, it's not okay to, to part out everything but one and why we can't take a separate motion on, on number three. I, I don't understand that. It happened once before, and I clarified it and, and then we, we went on allowing that. So I, I guess I'd like some discussion as to what the trouble is with separating that.
I, I, I think it still gets the same effect, I don't think, you, you, your motion, your point has been made that you're injured, you're, you're planning to vote for all of them. To me, this is, this is more of a political play of saying, well, you know, we're not going to give you that luxury of voting for them all separately. They, it's, it's the board's collective ability to manage the agenda how they do it based on, on three votes. I, I, to me, you've made your point that obviously you're not in favor of three, but you're in favor of all the rest. And I get your point that you don't want to have to vote against all the other ones just in order to vote for the one.
Well, right, I, I guess I don't understand the gamesmanship, and you're speaking for the other two, but maybe.
They made the motions, that's the only reason I can say that, you know.
Well, can we hear from?
I was confused. I, I would like more engagement. I, I was thinking that recommendation was to move forward with the engagement survey to the next uh meeting. So now that I'm reading it, it says to do the engagement survey to move forward with the plans. Because we didn't talk about it at all. We didn't talk about the engagement service at all. We blew it over and said that'll be at the next workshop.
No, we didn't. We said, uh, we're running out of time here, as administration asked, is, is everyone good with the engagement study and going forward? And everyone said yes. My point was just bringing up in discussion that because we glossed over it, kind of the perception is that we didn't take any time to discuss what three hundred of our staff filled out. That was just my point in discussion, if, take the time to look at it if you haven't, because we haven't talked about it here.
I mean, I, I think that is something, it's like a living, breathing document until you, till you do your next engagement survey. I don't expect it in my mind, it wasn't, like, we did it, we didn't discuss it that day. It's, to me, it's like, it's something that we keep going back to until you do one that's more relevant i- in a future date. So to me, it's always relevant, always necessary. We can discuss it almost at every meeting because almost any, everything, everything that we do should pertain at some level to, to that engagement survey. So I, 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 I understand your point that it didn't get maybe the, the limelight that it did there, but I think it can get its limelight at multiple other subsequent meetings. That point, I think the other part was too, is like the, to moving forward was, a lot of it was, my thought was the direction to staff to move forward with the external survey, uh, which was the, the, which is better being outlined in this recommendation was to move forward kind of with the one that is live right now, uh, which I encourage people in the public to take our external survey uh of county services.
Mr. Chair, and I didn't write the wording, but the wording under number nine was to review the Employment Engagement Survey Report, to review it, and we didn't. So I just think in fairness to the three hundred that took the time, and I'll, I'll leave it at that. But I, it sounds like there's confusion over this motion yet.
I, I really did when I read that. I, I left that meeting thinking that we were going to be talking about this at the next workshop. So I would hope that we disseminated a little bit, so yes, there is staff that filled it out, and we're very appreciative of that. And, and that's why I do think, I'm sure there's some things that we need to move forward with now with things that you guys want to implement, but I think for the large scale, I do think we should have a discussion on it.
So, but I'm confused, your motion was to approve all the recommendations minus three, not removal of nine.
Right.
And theirs was to approve all of them, so, so, but we're discussing nine, not three, so I'm a little bit confused here.
I'm, I was in the discussion phase, Mr. Chair, of the engagement study, and I said my piece on that. Now, the others, take your time or no time to look at the survey if you wish. Now, if you want to petition that onto a future, you can, so that's my only piece, so now we could my, but now we're still in that discussion phase for like this coverall, and I don't know if you two understood where I was coming from, like another meeting where then you said, oh, okay, we thought it was something else, and then you agreed with approving them all except for, in this case, number three, and then one of you can make a motion to deal with three separately. It, it only parts it out with me saying I'm okay with one through nine, but most likely not three. Is, is that just?
But you made your motion, it didn't get a second, I made a motion, it got a second, we're having that discussion based on that motion. I mean, this, that's just the process.
But the last time, the point was that people admitted that they didn't understand it, right? Remember that? And then it changed.
I don't, I don't recall that.
I think they knew what they were doing, because they, they could have done that, they knew what they were doing. They just, they chose to, yes, they knew what they're doing the first time, I think they, I, I, I think they're, they're quite intelligent, they understand what they're doing. It's, it's, they're, they're forcing your hand sometimes, like, how bad do you want to, to vote against the EDP? Are you willing to vote against everything because you want to vote that bad against it? They're forcing your hand by not giving you the luxury to vote for it on a one-by-one basis. Sometimes that, that is, i- 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 it's a political tool or a, a strategy you could use to somebody.
But, Mr. Chair, so I'm clear, what I mean by the first time was like a couple of weeks ago when this happened, and they said, oh, we thought it was something else, and then it changed, and then it was allowed to do the one through, except for one. That's my point, is just the past, once they understood it. But if they want to hold their ground, I guess, uh, you know, take the vote.
All right, there, we do have a motion, and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So two, two, so now we're not, so the recommendations fail. Um, now, now we're going to get deep into my, uh, so in order to make a four, a motion forward, it has to come from a descending side of the vote. So in order to.
Can we remake the motion?
What?
Can we remake the motion?
You can make a new motion, yes, as a, as a descending vote.
I'll make a motion that we approve all, um, all recommendations excluding nine of the Wright County. To be pushed forward to the next workshop.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I help with the conversation just a bit? I think what we're looking to do is approve, to remove item nine from the recommendations, to take a separate vote on it.
Okay.
And to approve items one through eight. Is that what you're looking for, Commissioner Holland? Take se- separate action on item nine?
Yes, there.
Yes. So we have a motion to approve.
Ten.
One through, so we're.
One through eight and ten.
And ten.
Ten B.
Removing number nine for separate consideration.
All items with the removal of nine. All right, so motion by Commissioner Holland to approve the County Board uh Workshop Items Recommendations, one through nine, or one, all of them except for nine, all right. And do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Dietrich. Any discussion? I, I, I think, I mean, I think nine, whether we approve it or don't approve it, it doesn't matter, because we can still come back and have the discussion. It, it, it's purely, it's not even a recommendation as it is a, a informational item. It could have been listed as an informational item that the engagement survey was presented to the board. It, so yes, we've seen it, is there a chance to have more discussion? Yes, we can put it on every board, every workshop if we want for the rest of the year, if, if that makes the board happy. I just wanted people to understand that it's not, it, it's not a really actionable item per se.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I can maybe comment on that. At the board meeting, we were running short on time, and so we offered to just briefly offer Commissioners an opportunity to comment on it. We're happy to come back and present on it, have a whole presentation already put together, so it won't really take any more work. If you'd like, in August, we can bring it back to the workshop and present and just get consensus of the group a little more thoroughly than we did before. Happy to do that.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. So we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
All right, uh, um, sorry, workshop agenda approved uh for three, one. All right, now we have to deal with item nine. I don't even necessarily know that we even need to take action on it because it's not, there's no action to it, the survey's already been done, it was just purely acknowledging that it was discussed in, in there, which it was already approved in the minutes, so I don't necessarily know that's even an actionable item. But if the board wants to take action on it, they certainly can.
Mr. Chair, I think we can just move the discussion on the Employee Engagement Survey to the workshop in August. Happy to bring it forward at that.
I think that'd be, yeah, because there's no changes to it or anything, so I think if, that makes sense. All right, um, now we are on to the last one is D one. Uh, we have the approved reimbursement for money spent on the connection with Fair, uh, the FLSA, a journal entry budget amendment, pardon me.
Good morning, Board. This is a request to approve a journal entry and budget amendment. It is related to a known calculation, missing calculation, we'll say, in the Oracle system at the time we went live on Phase Two, which is the payroll. Um, we began discussions with Sierra Cedar in October as we were preparing for go-live. They called our attention to this, that the calculation for the FLSA credit was not um working out correctly, and they needed more time to do it, and we would be delaying our go-live timeline if we held off on ensuring that this credit was in the system prior to go-live. Staff discussed this, we included the Sheriff's Office in this discussion and discussion, decision-making for their awareness. Um, and ultimately, based on the timeline, it was a decision on our end to move forward without this calculation, knowing that hours incurred by the Sheriff's Office, who is predominantly impacted by the FLSA credit, would be at their lower end. Um, summer is when they typically have the higher end of these FLSA eligible hours, which, where we would have this credit effect. Um, unfortunately, in May, an incident occurred increasing the liabilities on our FLSA, being that we were not allowed to take the credit, it caused a larger dollar amount than originally anticipated. Um, so we are requesting that we make the Sheriff's Office hole for this item, which is outside of their control.
Discussion.
Mr. Chair, that just makes sense to me, let's just fix this problem, and moving forward, it's all been adjusted, and it's, it'll, it'll be correct moving forward.
The correction was put into place on June sixth, so the credit is now being taken as we are allowed.
It was the most cost-effective, prudent uh way to move forward, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the uh budget amendment with the uh changes for the FLSA journal entry.
So moved, I'll second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Dietrich, second by Commissioner Holland, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, it is now uh ten forty-five, uh, we've come to the end of today's uh board meeting, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There was one item you did add at the beginning of the meeting, and that was to schedule a committee hole to take, uh, to discuss items four and five from items for consideration.
Oh, yes, oh, you're right, I was scheduled, correct, thank you for catching that. So uh, with that, let's look to find a date here when we want to circle back on those said two positions and how we want to move forward. So it looks like uh I would say we don't want to go too far, I would, I would ideally like to do something next week uh to keep the ball rolling on it since this Friday is out, so what does everybody look like next week?
Is Nadine around?
Yeah, she's, she's back, she's, she's available next week.
When does she go to Louisiana?
Not until in August, I believe.
Okay.
With the thirtieth? In a week, would that work?
The thirtieth is good for me.
Do we have the cannabis work group or is it?
Two.
The what?
Will, will that give us enough time in between?
Yeah, that's, that's, um.
One, we could do it in the morning.
Yeah, we could do it in the morning, I'm good.
Schedule something in the morning that day?
Hmm, we scheduled a, a tentative board meeting at nine AM, depending on the.
Yeah, so we could do it.
So we could do ten, we could do a ten o'clock, yep. So I'll entertain a motion to schedule a committee of the whole on July thirtieth at ten AM.
Mr. Chair, just for clarity, is that, will we have the information we need at that point, or we'll just be discussing what we will do, be, be, reviewing?
Well, I guess information is really largely driven, driven by the board, because it, based on earlier discussions, you wanted to, to define a process, a- and then there was just things brought up about job descriptions and such. Those things can't be done without the collective discussion of the board, and we have to have a bigger, we ran a little bit. Those things can't be done without the collective discussion of the board, and we have to have a bigger, we ran a little bit short on time this morning, too.
For sure.
So I think it's more of a continuation of those discussions and what that process.
I just want to clarify what the intent was.
Yep, so it's more about discussing, because we don't have a hard and fast process when appointing interims in this organization. So it's more to define what that process is. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to schedule a committee of the hole for the said items for the two interim positions at ten AM on July thirtieth.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Holland.
No, second.
Second by Commissioner Catchmark. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The committee of the hole is scheduled for ten AM on July thirtieth unanimously. All right. We are now at the end of today's agenda. I just wanted to quickly note that Central Mississippi Regional Planning Group, which is for the river crossing, was very graciously blessed through deed with a million-dollar grant to go forward with the Tier One environmental process, so that'll be a substantial savings to the region on getting that very costly analysis done as it is required as part of the NIPA process to move forward with that potential crossing.
Will that cover the whole cost?
Pardon me?
Will that cover the whole cost of that?
No, it will not. The Tier One environmentals, it could be anywhere from two to three million dollars. So, but it will cover a good chunk of it, though.
Congratulations, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I just have to add one thing. I have, I know that we are all in and out of the office, and sometimes if constituents want to get ahold of us, our information is on the website, but I'd like to give my cellphone, my work cellphone number and my email so that if there is any questions that I could answer, anytime that people want to meet or invite us to events, that I am certainly available. So my email is tina.m.dietrich@co.wright.mn.us, and my cellphone number, I always have to look this up, is six-one-two-four-seven-seven-one-seven-eight-five, and those are both my county contacts. So please, I would encourage anybody that needs some help with anything, that would like to meet and discuss items, please contact me, and we can certainly do that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Dietrich. At this time, we will adjourn today's County Board Meeting at ten fifty AM.